Thank you very much. Good night, New York! I'm going to adopt the protocol already established because time is short, and I just want to hail you up again. Good night, New York!
Good night!
Good night, Montreal! And good night to my people in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. Good night especially to West St. George. I want to ask you all a question because I don't know the answer. Why didn't Ralph have a town hall meeting when he was here last? And here we are tonight. Now, my message tonight is sober. I need to bring a message of hope, a message of love for the people of St. Vincent and the Grenadines. And that is what I intend to do as a candidate for West St. George, to remove the fear and the hopelessness that pervades St. Vincent and the Grenadines. When I go to the constituency in West St. George, everywhere there is this aura of oppression, depression, hopelessness, and we have to lift that from St. Vincent and the Grenadines. I want to bring a message of Vincy love, not Labour love. You see, they didn't realise how divisive that is. When you say Labour love, you're saying give the jobs to only Labour supporters, to my child as they do it, you know? So we say, let's say it together, "One nation, one people, one Vincy." That's right, "One SVG, St. Vincent and the Grenadines." So, I want to speak about FAIR, F-E-A-R. Many Vincentians in St. Vincent and the Grenadines, and even in the diaspora, are suffering from what is known as phobophobia. This is derived from the Greek word phobos, and it means fair or fair, fair or fair. What is phobophobia? It is developed by the unconscious mind and is linked to anxiety disorders and panic, which can lead to a feeling of the phobia itself. Fair is triggered before experiencing the actual event that causes the emotional trauma and stress. In other words, the fair exists even though the event has not happened yet. The undeniable legacy of the ULP regime, the Ralph Gonzalez regime, is fair or phobophobia. A renowned motivational speaker defines fair as "false emotions appearing real." This is very serious because we must conquer this fear that pervades St. Vincent and the Grenadines. So, most of the time, it appears to be real, and what happens? We become crippled by this fear. We become apathetic, even immune to corruption. That is what is going on in St. Vincent. Our fair has suppressed our humanity, and it makes us... You see, a part of what makes corruption so dangerous is that it feeds a cynical response. They're all corrupt, you know? It is all commonplace, everybody behaves the same, the NDP, they corrupt too, making corruption commonplace, even acceptable. And so you hear these ULP apologists saying that the NDP, they have no plan, they're not ready yet, they're just the same, all of this to excuse their inaction and bury their conscience for seeing what is happening in St. Vincent and the Grenadines, but still supporting the ULP. The irony of all of this is that the ULP supporters live in more fair than us. They fear they would lose their jobs, they fear that they will lose their perks, they would be victimised. They're living fair. And what is absolutely more ironical is that Ralph Gonzalez himself has now become the object of the fear that he has created in St. Vincent. He wants to go home, he's tired, he's fed up, but he is afraid to go. Why? 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 Because he is afraid of his own history and his own record, and if he doesn't set up a puppet to take over from him, then he will be investigated, his 17 years will be investigated. So he is crippled by his own fear. Let me tell you a story, and this is absolutely true. Three separate parliamentarians, I'm not going to tell you if they're present or past because I have probably, I have to protect them and their confidences. Three separate parliamentarians at different times came to my office, sat down in my office, and said to me, in fact, one of them was so fearful, they called through the secretary to make an appointment, which is what I thought it was legal business, so fearful, they had to pretend even to my secretary that they were coming to see me on legal business, and said to me, "I really want to leave the ULP, you know, I want to leave." And come election, this was around 2014, and he said, "Come election, I am going to be taking the platform for the NDP." Election came, and there I saw the person sitting in his red shirt on the ULP platform. This is the type of fear I'm speaking about, and that's not one person, you know, another one, and another one. Yes, Ralph, all your parliamentarians, most of them, they want to leave, but they are fearful, and so we have to pray, we have to break this fear that is over St. Vincent and the Grenadines. And that is not the only reason for the fear, because there is no dispite of crime and murders in St. Vincent, and persons are saying they have to lock in in the house early, they have to close down early, but not even there, they are safe because you remember what happened to Carly Douglas, he was hit by a stray bullet in his own house. So the fear pervades the land. But I decided that I want to use "fair," F-E-A-R, to speak about foreign policy, economic decline for the E, accountability, and our responsibility. Let me say about foreign policy. Reading from the 2015 NDP manifesto, we said that we recognise the importance of our role as a responsible state in the international community. We will therefore promote and encourage the maintenance of democratic principles and good governance, that is transparency, accountability, and respect for human rights. We will fervishly seek to maintain and establish links with states, international organisations, multilateral corporations, and other regional and international bodies, all for the welfare and interests of the people of St. Vincent and the Grenadines. Can we say that of the ULP? Let us look at an area where I believe we can be more cost-effective. The high cost of operating all St. Vincent and the Grenadines' embassies and consulates abroad at a time when the country is in such dire financial streets, we need to look at that. While this government, the ULP government, has argued for tightening the belt of its citizens, they are splurging abroad in their embassies. For years, they've told us how crucial it is that we should maintain diplomatic facilities abroad, but are they producing? What have we gained from these diplomatic missions that they have for the 17 years that the ULP have been there? Isn't it just a clever back door to open up lucrative jobs for the cohorts, the ULP cohorts? Look at this, let us consider a few facts. What is the cost of official travel and subsistence expenses by government ministers and the entourages? What is that cost? My research shows it is in the millions of dollars. What is the cost of personal housing for ambassadors and other heads of St. Vincent and the Grenadines' consulates? Tens of thousands of dollars. What about their salaries and their allowances and the chauffeur-driven cars? We need to look into these things. And about the homes that they look for, real estate, prime real estate to maintain these homes, how can the ULP justify this with a struggling nation, St. Vincent and the Grenadines, in these hard economic times? How can they justify these larceny? I say an NDP will find a way to restructure our operations abroad, that we can look and train diplomats, and we suggest that we can use students who are studying international relations and these things and train them, get them to help out in the missions, maybe on a pro bono or also as stipend basis, rather than employing the daughter of Dr. Gonzalez, the daughter of Jimmy Prince, the daughter of Miguel. It is atrocious, atrocious. Do we think that, what is the benefit for St. Vincent getting a seat on the Security UN Council? So that he can say, "I have done this"? What is the benefit? I am saying that they are splurging our monies, and we need to look into it. I am calling for an audit in all these overseas missions, an internal audit. Let us, let us, you the people here, we in St. Vincent, let us call for an internal audit for all the diplomatic missions aboard. Look at the recently, United States have allowed certain Caribbean countries to issue visas before you had to go to Barbados. Now you have Grenada, St. Lucia, and Antigua, St. Kitts. What happened to St. Vincent? Isn't this part of their backward repressive foreign policy? Is it because they support Nicaragua and Venezuela? So all of us must be punished because of this? It costs at least $1,000 for Vincentian to fly up to Barbados to get a visa. And Ralph Gonzalez will come back home and say, "That does not matter. You could go to Russia without having to get..." How many Vincentians would travel to Russia? How many? But the hundreds of Vincentians that must take an aeroplane, fly to Barbados, take a taxi, go down to apply for a visa, and that service was not extended to us. So we say that the foreign policy has failed. Let me just turn to the E, economic decline. For 17 years of the NDP administration, St. Vincent and the Grenadines carried a recurrent surplus of 5.28%. When the NDP first came on from 2001, for the first two or three years, they had a moderate surplus, and then a rapid decline into minus. Examine the recurrent estimates for 2014 and observe that tax and non-tax revenues were projected to raise $520 million EC dollars. And the current expenditure was expected at $664 million, a massive deficit of $134 million. That is the type of governance Ralph Gonzalez has been giving us. But we know that without you, the diaspora, this is very serious, you know? Your contribution to St. Vincent and the Grenadines is absolutely, thank you, my sister, critical. Without you, we would be in abject poverty. But Ralph Gonzalez, every independent, he's waiting to say, "Oh, barrels will come in free," as if he and the ULP sending the barrels. And this is his big independent speech, listen out for it this year. He wants to take the credit for the barrels that you are sending home to help our people. But continue, continue sending the barrels, of course, because without that, many Vincentians would have a very, very sad Christmas, you know? Now, let me, let me talk about accountability. I want to get really serious now, because this is an absolutely burning issue, and I join with my leader, who raised it, the issue of accountability, and Ralph was trembling in his shoes, definitely. The ULP government has been entrusted with public resources, and they must be answerable to you, the people, for their fiscal as well as social responsibilities. We must demand absolute transparency and absolute accountability, because accountability is fundamental to good governance, and transparency must be the bedrock of democracy. At the last sitting in Parliament, was it September, August, they laid the 212 Public Accounts Report in 2018. Before that, the last report was 2011, six, seven years without laying the public account reports. But what is more, as far as I'm concerned, reading that report does not help. It does, there are many, many factors, as you say, my brother, that does not add up. Let me just tell you what Section 75 of the Constitution says. "There shall be a Director of Audit whose office shall be a public office. The Director of Audit shall satisfy himself at all monies that has been appropriated by Parliament and dispersed have been applied to the purposes for which they were so appropriated, and that the expenditure conforms to the authority that governs it." Listen to this. "Be at least once in every year, audit and report on all public accounts of St. Vincent and the Grenadines." Did it say some? Did it say only that what has been appropriated? All public accounts of St. Vincent and the Grenadines, the accounts of all officers and authorities of the government. Continue. "The Director of Audit and any officer authorised by him shall have access to all books, records, returns, reports, and other documents which in his opinion relates to any of the accounts referred to..." In subsection 2, that is the section I just read to you. "...then the Director of Audit shall submit every report made by him in pursuance of the section to the Minister of Finance," which happens to be Ralph or his son, or both of them, "and having submitted that report, they shall not, later than seven days after the House first meets, lay the report before the House." Now, I read this to say to you, you, the diaspora, have raised funds and sent home money for the international airport.
Yes.
Lot of money. Lot of money. To date, absolutely no accounting for one of the biggest capital projects in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. What is their excuse? Well, you don't have to lay it because it's a statutory body. That is the argument they're giving us. You don't have to lay those accounts in Parliament because it is a statutory body. And Section 75 says, "Only monies that has been appropriated," but I just read it for you. I just read it for you, it says, "All public accounts." How can Vincentian sit down and accept? How can we accept that explanation? All public accounts. So, the Gonzalez government has been in breach of this section for the last 12 years, well, longer than that, all the time they have been reigning. They list the public accounts, but I am not satisfied that it can be, it is transparent enough. So, I went on the radio when the account issue, accountability, was very live, St. Vincent and the Grenadines, on nice radio, and I raised the issue of taking the government to court, to demand accountability, to get a declaration. I quoted cases from the Caribbean where similar, yeah, similar cases were taken before the court. It was not, a few days after that, a man armed with a long cutlass came to my home in the dead of night with a knapsack on his back. I am told that that was supposed to put me in after, to change his clothes after he caught me up. He tried to get in through my son's room and could not. But I did, I only discovered it looking at the tapes next morning. It was all over the internet, this man with this long cutlass came to my home. But what was strange? When I saw it, I took a picture of it luckily from my DVD. Within a day or two, all the footage disappeared from my DVD, eh, people? All the footage, I kid you not, simultaneously, my computers in my office were wiped, clean. You think we have it easy in St. Vincent? Wiped, clean. And then the ULP apologists would say, "Hey, you don't think that was maybe an irate client who came to your house?" Dr. Gonzalez told me that too. Funny, three different ULP people, how they think alike so. "You don't think that was maybe an irate client?" I said, "Ralph," and he had the capability to wipe my DVR and my computers at the same So, I'm saying that even then, when I reported the matter, it took the police days, and after persons cried out on the internet, the police came to my house. You think anything happened? They arrested somebody, let them go? That was it. But that's not the first time, you know? Because when, when, as you all know, Ralph Gonzalez was charged for rape by myself and Nicole Sylvester, it was a private criminal action, and strange enough, within days, someone came to my house, this time with a jogger, we captured it on the camera with a DAS jogger, was trying to get in, probably to burn the house down. I gave it to the police, they lost the footage. Nobody was ever arrested for it, ever. Fair tactics, that's what it is. So, when I tell you about the fear that pervades our land, it is not a joke, but I want to get back to the accountability. I want to get back to the accountability. I am saying to you that the Ralph Gonzalez administration, they have intermingled and co-mingled funds between various statutory bodies in such a way that it may be difficult to trace and track, for what reason? Listen to what Dr. Gonzalez said in the House. "Mr. Speaker, so far, an amount of $103 million EC dollars has been borrowed by and on behalf of the International Airport Development Company as bridging loans for the construction of the Argyle International Airport. The amounts in sourcing of these loans are as follows: National Insurance Services, $40 million; First Caribbean International Bank, $30 million; Petchikaribs, St. Vincent, $20 million; Alba Bank, Venezuela, $13.5 million." Listen, all of the loans have either a legal mortgage over land, or a sovereign guarantee, or both. In the case of the $40 million borrowed from the NIS, these funds were made available to the IADC indirectly through the National Properties Limited, a state-owned company. National Properties purchased from IADC 600 acres of land at Park Industry, Beckway, for $125 million, as part payment to IADC for the land. National Properties borrowed $40 million from NIS and paid this over to IADC. Part of this land bought by National Properties at Park Industry was used to secure the loan from NIS. I don't know if you could follow all of this rigmarole. He went on, "The NIS loan to National Properties is secured by a government guarantee from the First Caribbean International Bank. The IADC initially borrowed $30 million bridging loan, and since then, IADC has repaid $10 million of the principal to FCIB. Over the next two years, the IADC will repay the outstanding $20 million." Am I there, people? I don't know if you understand this. I am saying that they use these statutory bodies, one bow, one bone body, I mean, and when you ask for accountability, they say, "Oh, no, this is statutory bodies, you don't have to bring it to the House. We should not accept this anymore. We work too hard. This is our money that they're spending like that, and we should not accept it." Now, recently, he bragged about getting forgiveness from Petchikaribs. We don't know, as you know, there was over $1 million and something were missing, was not brought to the books from Petchikaribs money, $112 million. Why are we accepting this? Who would accept somebody running your business or your home like that? And then he says he got debt forgiveness. We don't know what the debt forgiveness was for, where the money went, what it was used for. And Emusus went in the House and spoke about monies, checks. Check number 489, paid to KFC, $94.50 from Petchikaribs. Check number 496, Randy supermarket, $71.56. Check number 507, Sellwell, $230. Check number 510, Godfrey Pompey, the PS at the Prime Minister's Office, $5,365.88. Check number 512, Ralph Gonzalez, $5,365.88. Check number 514, missing. I mean, how can we accept this lack, this gross lack of accountability? No, I'm not saying that these checks were not maybe for legitimate causes. We don't know, but we ought to know, we ought to demand it from him. Well, let me just read quickly what the Auditor General said in the 2012 report that they laid in the House in 2018. "Non-compliance," it headed, "as highlighted in previous reports, there are several systems and procedures which have not been maintained by the relevant accounting officers." This is our public accounts people. Arrays of revenue. "No annual returns of arrays of revenue or monthly reports of recovery of arrays of revenue was submitted by the heads of departments who are responsible for the collection of revenue as required by Regulation 99 Finance Regulation 2009." This is an area that needs urgent attention, as governments should be in a position to know their outstanding arrays. How else can the Accountant General say it? How much stronger words can be used? She says, "The Accountant General should take action," I mean, the Auditor, sorry, "the Accountant General should take action to ensure that annual returns and reports are received. Half-yearly returns, return of receipt books, half-yearly returns of receipt books have not been submitted by revenue collecting departments as required by Regulation 47 Finance Regulation 2009." This is the Auditor saying, "Accountant General must insist that these returns are provided as required by the regulation." Store's tabulous summary. "No store's tabulous summary has been submitted for the Public Works Department unallocated stores as required by Store Rule 91." What does Public Works Departments keep? Cement, lumber, et cetera? Galvanise? No account, no account. Motor vehicle logbooks, garage register. Vehicle logbook and garage registers are intended to capture data that can be used to access the economy and efficiency of the vehicles operated by the various ministries and departments. "No proper maintenance of the records can also..." Sorry, "The proper maintenance of the records can also aid in the control of the use of the vehicles and further reduce the incidence of misuse of the asset." Several of the ministries and departments have ignored the use of these records. And I could go on and on. Store rules, she says, "The records for keeping store rules, very important, it guards against the high risk of misappropriation. In the absence of these vital records, it is impossible to ascertain that all the assets that were purchased for use in the ministry and the department..." that were purchased for use in the ministry and department are still at hand." And this is a report we're getting six years later. When are we going to get the other reports? 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17? And then she went down the Ministry and Department of Tables, most of that were not maintained. Equipment ledger not maintained for the House of Assembly, not maintained for Service Department, not maintained for the Ministry of National Security, the Police, Coast Guard, on and on. In press, just get hold of those accounts, the public accounts for 2012 that was late to the House and read for yourself. I'm reading verbatim, word for word, what can be found in the public accounts. Our ULP government has failed us miserably when coming to spending your money and accounting to you how you spend it. So let me move on to responsibility. The late Nelson Mandela said this. "Action without vision is merely passing time. Vision without action is merely daydreaming. But vision with action can change the world." And this is what the NDP is going to bring. We are going to bring our vision with action. Our responsibility is to heal our bleeding nation and to end this pervasive fear that is all over the land. I ask, what is the hope of mankind, wherever they are? All over the world, you know, man just wants to live in a world of peace and joy and happiness. That's what we want. We don't want to be here rabble-rousing today and having to be pulling down the government that is not doing well. We want our governments to do well so that we can live in peace and prosperity. This is the hope of God for man. We want one family on the guard. We don't want yellow over there and red over here. That's not what we want. We want to live up to this mantra. One Vincy, one family on the guard. And how do we do this? You see that manifesto that the NDP produced in 2015? Get hold of it. The NDP promised that in the first year, we will remove VAT on over 100 basic items. This will help the poor man right in his pocket. Remove VAT on electricity and pursue other options to reduce overall electricity costs. Three, replant and rehabilitate 1,000 acres of bananas, Bernard. Four, reinstate a development bank to support the development of enterprise in agriculture, tourism, et cetera. Five, design and implement community to provide local employment under the auspices of the Constituency Development Fund, LECOC. Six, peripheal fees for CSEC and CAPE exams. This is a promise that we would make and we intend to keep. Seven, revive and finance the book loan scheme. Many people forgot that it was the NDP that started the book loan scheme. And now you hear them talking as if it was theirs. Eight, develop and maintain playing fields in every constituency. We know the importance of sport for the development of the young mind. Nine, tackle and reduce corruption and crime. Ten, bring to Parliament and pass integrity legislation. Seventeen years the NDP promised this. Ask yourself, the ULP, sorry, ask yourself, why no? They're bringing all sorts of acid to the House, no integrity legislation. I remember Vince Beatz saying, "If within the first year it is not passed, I gone." He's retired and still drawing a salary. Eleven, design and implement a national health insurance service. Twelve, ensure the availability at community level of basic healthcare facilities and medications for sugar, pressure and other common ailments. Thirteen, businessmen would love this one. Pay down the government's debt to the private sector by 50%. Fourteen, provide 500 jobs in information and communication technology. Fifteen, design and implement a trual income housing program that will provide quality houses at affordable prices. This is what we promised to do. Fifteen things, low-hanging fruits. It's not rocket science, it's something that we can do in the first two years, the first year of an NDP government. So we are saying that we will do this by providing stimuli to the major productive sectors in the economy, that we will achieve a current account surplus and an overall deficit of not exceeding 3% of the GDP. Within three years, that is a promise. And this, you know, was done at the time when Anam Yusus was the head. And when Anam tells you something is going to happen when it comes to accounting and economy and so, book it. When we say that we will do this, we will do it. I call our manifesto the salvation for St Vincent and the Grenadines. It's a rescue mission. You've got to put us there so we can rescue our alien nation. Now, before I leave, I want to suggest two further arms of government. All of you would know that there are three arms of government. There is the judiciary, the legislature and the executive. That is constitutional, three different arms of government. And they're supposed to be independent of each other. But in order to make our government more democratic, I am suggesting, and I would like to urge, that we have two further arms of government. Public affairs and public finances. No longer should any government tell you, when you ask about accounts for Argyle Airport, you have that title deed? Are we not laying it before the House? I am suggesting that they have a public affairs arm of government. There should be absolute transparency of all government affairs. Government, it is us, it is our business. How can you hide contracts at time when these contract is awarded? Are we going to see that time when these contract laid before the House? Are we going to know who is tendering for what? Is this going to be another Argyle International Airport where you never get the accounts? So we need to call for it. You know, we have power, you know, the power lies with us. The power lies with us, we must absolutely call for it. Total transparency and accountability. Public affairs, public finances, that is what I am urging. No longer, we must have a Prime Minister saying to us, "We're not going to show you the accounts. Go to what he said, go to CPO and you will get the accounts." Persons went, Margaret London, as they call her, the talk show host of St Vincent, queen of talk show hosting St Vincent. She went there, she went to CPO. She could not get the accounts. Run around. And then when the accounts finally came, they were dismal. There's something, there's nothing that we can accept. Is that Junior Bacchus I'm seeing? How are you going, Famo? From Western George? Happy, welcome, welcome, welcome. So I'm saying that we, the public, we are, we are the ones who have to demand it and don't give up on it. Absolute accountability, absolute transparency. Let's demand a public affairs and public accounts arm of government. Now, I want to say something to my people of Western George. Because my emergence in politics, you know, is yet another call to service. All my life, I have worked for the dispossessed, the poor, the underdog in my legal profession, lots of pro bono work. As I go through the constituency in Western George, you know, and even over St Vincent, many people come to me and say, "You remember me?" I say, "No." "You did so-and-so for me, I kid you not. You did so-and-so for me. You helped my daughter, my son, my grandmother, my so-and-so." And I would say, "Wow." And so it really makes my heart feel good. I've always looked out for the underdog. I've always had a burning desire and interest to help people, always. You know, my counterpart, the person who runs, who is running against me or who ran, who is now holding the constituency. I was told Seth is a mess. I was told that he was given a big package. There is a teacher who'd have been asking to run. And I'm told that he has said, "Well, if the package is big enough, I will run." Nobody gave me a package, you know? I didn't want a package. I have come to offer myself to see what help I can give. I mean, I do lots of pro bono work, the petitions. I didn't even mention the petitions tonight, and I'll say briefly. The petitions are to be heard on the 3rd of December, that week, in St Vincent, okay? All the evidence is in and we are ready for the trial. That I give the service to my party. All the lawyers working for the NDP, totally pro bono. While the others on the other side have collected hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' money, fighting for an election that they say is free and fair. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? So I tell you, the people of Western George, that I intend to immerse myself in the business of Western George. I've been to many of the areas on afternoons, in the rain sometimes, walking up some steps, sliding down banks, all sorts of things because the roads are atrocious. But I have been there and I intend to do it. I want to walk in the steps of Yvonne Francis Gibson. And take home that seat for the NDP. Let's say it, one nation, one people, one Vincy. K has the key to set you free.
Here's another great presentation, Kim Bacchus Betis. One of the top legal practitioners in St Vincent and the Grenadines has stepped into the ring and...